Alright, we're good, shawty. Welcome. Welcome to the Committee of the Hall. And it's a pleasure to have you all here and Councilmember as well. Let's get into it and we are gonna go ahead and start with approval of the minutes for December 6, 2023. Corrections to the minutes, questions?
We make a motion to approve the Committee of the Hall minutes for December 6, 2023.
Thank you, I just second.
I'll take it.
Thank you, Paul. And with the consensus, or what was it? All in favor, there we go. Conducted in the class. All in favor! Alright, alright. We'll go ahead and move forward to our discussion item number one for the Power Department Report. And invite Greg Bellon, 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 right? Bellon. Bellon. It would be Bellon.
Hello, Matt.
You want to introduce other people here?
Yeah, we're gonna do that right away. And Council Mayor, thank you for letting us be here tonight. So, I thought with, uh, two new council members, we tend to, uh, we love our employees. And so that's what makes our department above everybody else in my mind. In our city, and we love our city's awesomes, but we love our employees. So we'll just give you a brief overview of our department, uh, what we do, and, uh, we'll go from there. So, right, so we have 40 employees. We've got seven administrative. We are with, you know, I can't with them all, but, uh, we've got a good group of administration. And then these two right here, that are on the, on the screen, there are two newest, uh, two more, two newest employees. Engineering manager, uh, go ahead, Chris Nieman, their engineering manager. Stand up and introduce yourself a little bit. Come up here and let him tell you who he is and maybe what he does for the department.
So I'm the engineering manager. Been here since nineteen, nineteen ninety-two. I worked for the city and, uh, and REAs. Um, so currently I'm in REAs, the Rural Electric Association, Dix Power, job covers, uh... So REAs are Darkane Power, Moonlight Electric, so a little bit more rural applications. So, um, I was with them ten years, city, uh, twenty, twenty-four years still. And we thought we were gonna retire now here, so. Um, so... So I'm over the, uh, the people, so, um, there's three in metering. So the metering, um, I also teach, was an adjunct teacher for Salt Lake Community College. I did substation training, teaching for Salt Lake Community College. I've been with them twenty years. Um, so currently we have two apprentices on the metering side that are in that apprenticeship program. And there's two also in the substation. So I help out on that side too, so. Um, so we have the metering and then we have, uh, there's five substation technicians. Uh, one, one with the power generation, Paul. Um, yeah, he handles the generation, takes care of that. So it's great. Murray's so blessed to have that, that capacity and that generation here. Um, so, and then, uh, there's four planners. Where they do the planning, coordinating and, uh, meeting with the contractors and facilitate jobs. And, um, we got some great things to do. Murray, we're excited, I'm excited to be here. I was raised, ordered by Fashion Place Mall. So as a junior, we decided to move to Delta. And New Ranchy, so. Um, so I did graduate from Murray High, I graduated from Delta High, but I was raised here for seventeen years, so. I love it, so it's great to be back.
Thank you. Thanks, Chris. We're grateful to have you. Then Eric Bracewell, come on up, Eric. Operations manager.
Doesn't he love to get up in front of people?
Yeah. This actually.
Bracewell, I'm the operations manager, um, I believe, I like long walk on the beach. Don't get to sit down here, so. I'm in charge of operations, but I've been with Murray City for eighteen years. I started off in the work, I worked as the journeyman utility arborist is what they're called. And then I'm also a journeyman lineman, and I worked on the line crews for ten years, and I'm also a journeyman meter tech. And Chris was actually my teacher when I was going through my metering apprenticeship. And, uh, just to give you a little feedback, our apprentices, our, our apprenticeships are four years and about eighty-two hundred hours on the job train. So I mean, it's quite a bit to get through apprenticeships. And so the guys that we have going through right now, they put a lot of their own time, they go to school, they don't get paid to go to school. And so they come to work and then they go to school afterwards, but, um, so when they get those journeyman cards, it's kind of a big deal for them. We really appreciate having Chris here and he teaches that class for us. So his knowledge is, is I learned, you know, I've learned, I've known Chris for a while and I've been before I went through that. I took some of his classes out of Logan Power, he was at Logan Power for a while, and it was, it was great taking his classes, but, um... I'm, I'm in charge of the linemen, so we have four line crews and we're able to put on a service crew, which has, has saved our response time. Uh, it's cut it in half with, with during, during our hours, our normal operating hours. And so just having that service crew is huge. Um, we had one probably about fifteen years ago and we lost all those lines to retirement. We, we haven't had the chance to put one back on. Thanks to the help of you guys and allowing us to hire one more person and that we're able to put that service crew back on. I think it's helped our community, our, our city a lot in, in response time for power outages. Um, so I'm in charge of the lineman, I'm also in charge of the line crews. We have four in-house tree crews that I'm in charge of. And, you know, having in-house tree guys, it's just, it's, I mean, you guys work with them, you've seen them, what they do at the, uh, city hall for the Christmas tree and everything. It's just awesome having in-house. I've done both, I've worked on the contractor's side of, of trees, that's how I got into Murray City. And, uh, just having our own tree crew, it's, it's priceless. They can do the work that contractors can't, they're here, they care about the city because they actually work for the city and so. Um, be very grateful to work here. Um, I got twelve years to go, we're hoping, hoping I can, uh, make everybody proud, you know? I appreciate Greg and, and Matt for giving me the opportunity to, to take on the operations manager job and just thankful to be here, so, yeah, thank you.
Good answer, Derek. Uh, we, we have turned over four major... Uh, we are, well, we just had a retirement, so we're fully staffed, but we're, we have a position open again, so. Up on wood, we'll, we'll see how that... Um... So Eric talked about the forestry, nine employees, so I mean, how tall are, how tall is that tree they're in right now, Eric?
I'd say seventy, eighty feet.
I mean, they're up there, you can see the power lines on the other side of the tree, I mean, these guys, I'm sorry, they don't get paid enough. I, I was, I was, they, for what they do, they, and they, they work hard every day, they're out just trimming, they, they keep, but... Our path, so, we haven't seen it this year, um, but if we get a really heavy wet snow, all the leaves are still on the trees. Every other city around has outages like crazy. Murray, I think this kind of gets through because our guys are out just doing that every day. So they're awesome, so, um, if you see our forestry guys out working, though, I guess you get home, just don't scare them out of the tree, but... Let them know they're appreciated. Then we got line workers, working employees that Eric was talking about, they're not working on streetlights or on new installations, they're troubleshooting, they're pulling in after hours, um, they're... Everyone of our employees, everyone of our employees is very important to us, so, um, and we got metering, uh, Chris talked about metering, we've got three people in metering, two apprentices. Uh, one of our apprentices though was actually a journeyman lineman, so that's kind of nice, that, that's the same route that Eric went, he was a journeyman lineman and he came over into metering, so. Uh, we're doing really well in our metering, um...
Have we had any of our apprentices drop or retain them pretty well for the four years?
We lost two line, or on our line crew, we lost two our apprentices about four years ago. That hurt, that was hard. And we actually, so we kind of changed our pay scale, uh, the pay scale was a little bit... The rest of the city, so we, we fixed that, um, but hopefully we can retain them. We, we don't lose a lot of employees. I think people that come here enjoy working here and we usually don't lose a lot, so that says a lot about Murray and the, as a city as a whole, so. Um, substations, uh, our, our sub guys, they're, that's one of our, our generation substation, um... Supervisor, he's only just retired, Aubrey Hallam, so that's a position that's open right now, but they do a lot. Um, they're, they do our hydro, they maintain our substations, um, they get a lot in in a day, so, uh, that's whole heck of a thing. Let's, uh, let's see, see the ride. But we have, I mean, I didn't, I can't see it. Talking about you. The apple doesn't fall far from the tree, we love having two big faces in front of you. And we got central control, we got five employees, the last twenty-four days, we have a dispatch room, uh, we call it central control. We have an employee up there, oh, Cory right there, he's our supervisor, he, he's there Monday through Friday, regular, and there's someone... He's in Wednesday, he's there by himself, Thursday, Friday, there's someone else at the desk, there's two people there, but then we have people that take turns being called, or, I mean, after hours and during the night, so. We always have someone on, in our central control and, yeah, they take all, after, they take all city calls after hours. They'll dispatch water, they'll dispatch anything that need to do, like their power department, but... And then they also monitor every day, every hour, they're up there monitoring prices of power. And then they, they decide, we have, we have gas purchase, uh, but gas right now is in the three dollar range, what a gas. Last year was sixty, last year was sixty dollars, so we purchase some gas, just ahead a little bit and, but they'll buy it back at the spot price, which is fine, but... We can buy it cheaper right now than we can generate, and so...
Saved us, right, a few years ago, that purchase?
Well, yeah, it's, we always, the gas, so we always go through our really heavy hours, heavy time in the, in the summer with, with our gas, and... So that, they, they, that was talked about today, um, we're blessed to have three turbines back there and to generate almost thirty-three megawatts, so. And that, that's, that's, not every, not every city has that, not every power department has that, so. But, uh, so they're up there monitoring, they do a really good job of, they're just, they can save us a lot of money in a day. So they're up there just watching and they'll, they'll check in the first thing in the morning and if they see someone that's got some power during the day that's lower than what they think's gonna come in, boom, they'll make a transaction with Logan. Uh, with their excess power and bring it in, so it's fun. I would love to, anytime anybody wants to come through, we'd love to take you around and let you see these guys and what everybody does.
That's what you used to do, right?
In...
This position?
But Matt's over, so Matt's over.
I'm over it now.
Tell everybody about your area, who you're over, so.
So I, I supervise them now at central control and then the warehouse area, which Greg will talk about in a minute. We have two warehouse employees and a purchasing agent, uh, Kerry Hart, and then, um, my old position in energy services, Zach Green, who was one of our planners, is taking that position and... And, uh, he has background in sustainability as well, so.
We did not know that.
Yeah.
And now his position opened up.
We had no idea that he had that background, he had a background in geography and then I had to ask him, hey, would you have any interest in this? And he said, yeah, I happen to have a degree in sustainability. How convenient for you.
He's like telling.
And he said, there's gonna be someone on the council that really wants to talk to you, right? Maybe a few people, so, made that introduction, so.
It's really interesting meeting him.
Yeah. He's, he's great, he's, he's quiet, kind of unassuming, but he, he's very smart, yeah. Yes, it's very good. So it's great to, to promote him internally whenever we can, right, and, yeah. That's one of the few positions that has a, uh, an education requirement. But we have a lot of positions that have apprenticeship programs, but, but that position has an education requirement and we weren't sure.
We lost him to GIS for a month or two and we were able to get him back. We took him back with open arms. They're our planners, um... I mean, we had two planners retire, I think that been now, three years ago?
Couple of years, yeah.
Um, I mean, they decided to go out the door the same day. We had, I mean, they just left and DJ is the one in the middle on the right, uh, he just kind of had to pick up the pieces and he's done a great job. And we hired Mike Brown, he came from the forestry division, uh, Matt McQuiston came from a different division in the city, and then Carson came from a different division in the city. And we got a really good group right now and they get along really well and they're, they're doing awesome. Yeah, sorry, that thing guy looking at me again. Thanks for us, you're awesome. Rub it in, way to rub it in. But they do an amazing job, they do our blue stakes, so Carson does our blue stakes, um, and that, if you know how important that is, but, uh, anyone, anytime anyone's supposed to dig, they're supposed to call a blue stake. So important because there's so much in the ground and all it would take is power, I mean, well, and power, gas, anything, they want to hit anything that's in the ground, but, uh, they do a really good job of, uh, going out and blue staking. And make sure they have good equipment, that's something we really have worked over the years to get the multi-equipment they need to do their jobs in a good, safe manner. We're always about working smarter when we can and not harder if we don't have to, but they do work hard. We like to provide the best equipment that we can with them, but, so... Um, and there's a warehouse, uh, that's it. Uh, if you haven't met Ed, come over to our warehouse and he can, he's a Pittsburgh Steeler fan, for a while, he's from Pittsburgh and anyway, he, he, him and, um, good job, uh... So Kerry, Kerry's over eight on warehouse, he's over... I don't know, purchasing agent. He's our purchasing agent.
We got twelve questions.
Inventory and twelve questions.
And then Bridger.
And we got Bridger back there as well, we've got two in the warehouse and Kerry, so. And then they oversee about three million dollars worth of inventory, but we count that every year and I'll tell you what, it comes between, you know, there's not much written off every year, but they do a really good job and, uh, I don't know, just... Can't say enough about them either, so. So we talked about UMs today, this is the only one I'm gonna throw out there, uh, so Utah Associated Municipal Power Systems, that's what Mike was talking about today, so he actually worked for UMs. And, um, so they're in a, in a local agency, um, and they, we work really hand in hand with them, they... They represent, um, fifty members, there's thirty plus members from Utah, little utilities, I'll be a little, there's some large ones like us and, uh, Provo, not Provo, sorry, uh, Logan, Lehigh, um, some of the bigger ones, but St. George. A lot of small ones that are represented through UMs, so, but, so if you hear us talk about UMs, that's what they are and, um, I attend those meetings, Matt does as well, uh, once a month, they have meetings that we go to and then they have a member conference every year in August, so, uh, it's really... Uh, a good conference to go to and you get a lot of information there. Um, any questions at this point?
So, the UM, is, is this, uh, where you can monitor and buy energy off each other, is this a...
Through UMs, yeah, so they have a trading, they have a trading desk as well, and so they oversee all, I mean, their load is huge, they oversee all these cities. And so they have to make sure they can cover everybody's load, but yeah, so we're just a small part of that, but yeah, they, they have a desk there as well. So we're going through UMs to buy from Logan or buy from St. George or sell.
So they're like the flea market, everybody comes and sells everything.
Kind of, yeah, yeah, they're like big trading desk.
Yeah.
I like the flea market, yeah. They, uh, and, um, they're, they're just, uh, we get, we get a lot from you. We appreciate that. Um, just real quick on our resources, so we have CRF, we have the Colorado River Storage Project, we get, you know, around thirteen megawatts from there. Hundred, hundred power plant over in Price, that's a twenty-two megawatt coal, that one I think is... I think it's slated until twenty thirty-two, I believe, but coal is an issue, so we, we don't get coal, we don't get them every day, or we don't get them every month, they're kind of cycling to make sure we get covered to the highest loaded areas, so... But they're, they can only get so much coal, it's a... Uh, landfill, we have two landfill plants, about seven and a half megawatts total there, um, that is awesome, I mean, there is nobody else in the state that has methane gas, we do.
We're probably one of the only ones in the west too.
Probably, yeah, they're just...
Talking to other states, they're like, wait, what? They extract from the dump?
We should too. We, we were, we were, we were talking to someone about, we, we pulled that all that, yeah, that, that's not a thing. Like, okay, I mean, green is green, I mean, this, it's, it's either, they either generate with it or they flare it, so I mean, we're, we're helping with the greenhouse gas there and methane, so I lo, I love that, I think whoever, I think it was, uh, and the foresight there to take that on was, was awesome, so...
Wasn't it before summer?
Um, it was with Mayor Smart. Yeah, yeah, Gary Merrill, Gary Merrill was, Gary Merrill was, yeah. So, and it just went online, this is why I got hired, uh, on the very, it was already employed. And we've got Red Mesa Solar, about five megawatt, and WRP is kind of with, uh, CRSP, we can buy power through them, but they just go out on the market now, so we don't do a whole lot with that, if it's available, we decide to do that. We got thirty-three megawatts in our turbines and then, we actually right now have seventy-two megawatts of IPP, we don't use it, we could call it back, we do, we will call back this summer to help with about nineteen megawatts this summer, uh, just to help get us through the load. And one, one day we'll maybe talk about how we have to schedule our resources, I got to talk to Adam, so I think he got a good idea, but if you wanted to come over and schedule a appointment with us, we'd sit down and really talk you through their resources, I mean, anybody, anybody that wants to come over. But you have a base load that you can stay to, so you have a peaky and then you come down, so the lowest part, you really don't want to go base load anywhere than what your lowest resource, you know, where in the low, like a low load hours, like at night, you know, five o'clock in the morning. We're down at thirty-three megawatts, so you don't ever want to have to have your base load higher than that, cause then you're gonna be excess and you have to sell it back. But it's just, it's really interesting how we have to fill in our resources and in summertime it gets up to a hundred megawatts, uh, so that's a pretty big load to fill, so we try to do our, we have to go out on market for some of that, but... We're doing, we're, I think we have a really good resource mix, um, and, uh, we're, I think we're, I think, I really like our resource mix, we're doing well, we're always looking for new stuff. Uh, actually we did put one more sunny side coal, it's not up there, um, we got three, three megawatt, three megawatts of sunny side coal, which is, uh, just kind of a replacement for, to get us through a couple more years, but, um...
So...
We're looking at, go ahead, go ahead.
I'm just wondering, is there anything available with Red Mesa, are they opening anything up or do you have to stay at five Red Mesa?
Um, I don't know if they are, I haven't, I'm not sure if they're going to expand, but we would definitely be on the list for sure to expand. We're also looking at another, uh, solar project, um, we've signed up, we're just under eight megawatts for that, it's in a study project page right now, so, uh, so we're, we're definitely exploring bringing on some more, which, which is good because it will help us, it'll help us, and then we'll have some battery backup, so that one could actually... Help us go farther into our, you know, our peak at night when the sun goes down, so that one we're really excited about.
Where is that?
Um, trying to remember where that one's at, there's two different ones, it's in the state, so, yeah. I'm, I'm ahead of coming where located.
Steel solar.
Yeah, there's steel solar and lion solar, there's two different ones, but, um, so, but we'll, I'll keep you, keep you on top of that, cause that one's, I'm really excited about that, so.
That's awesome to hear.
Looks like we're about five minutes away, so we're gonna wrap it up.
So I was gonna tell you guys a few more minutes.
Oh, really? Okay.
You're a paper, but maybe a few more.
Okay, so here's just a couple of our projects we're working on, central substation, we've talked about that, uh, uh, we've got RFP ready, almost ready to go out for two transformers, two power transformers, two sixty...
Fifty-fives?
Sixty.
Sixty, two sixty megawatt, our MVA transformers. And, you know, it's gonna be two million dollars a piece, probably. They're gonna be expensive, but that's okay. Uh, we don't know yet, but, yeah, exactly. But it's, it's a, it's a project, um, and we're, we're really gonna try and reduce, we thought about moving it up to where our warehouse building is right now. Uh, Chris got here and said, oh, we can keep it right where it's at. I was gonna say it was millions, millions, so we're gonna, we already had two, two holes drilled, went down twenty feet and there's good soil. So we're gonna keep it right where it's at and that's gonna save us a lot of money.
Keep it up, Chris.
Yeah, we thought we were gonna, I mean, we were looking, we're looking, we're looking at twenty-four million dollars.
Yeah.
Move a building and move it, we're doing it, I think we're... So maybe better than, we'll, we'll see, we're, but, uh, that's expertise that Chris brought along with him, so.
Keep it up.
Yeah. So, and, and Eric, I mean, they're, they work together with all of us, so we're, we're excited about that, so. Just kind of forget all those numbers, I, cause I, I don't know what they're gonna come in at, but it's gonna, it's gonna be a savings, some big savings. Uh, and my meters, we've got meters gonna be getting set out, hopefully within the next three months, and that's gonna be probably a year, year and a half project to get all those, maybe two years to get those out. And then, of course, we've got LED streetlights, uh, we worked with Brenda to get some money set aside for LED streetlights and we're gonna probably do a three-year project on that and, uh, so we're excited, we got some good things coming up and, I mean, just the savings on LED streetlights that pay back will probably be awesome, I mean, we'll get a payback on those quite in a few years, I think, so... I know it's a lot to digest, but, uh, just wanted to keep it simple, kind of, give you, I really want you, I just want to know our employees, that's, I want you to just kind of get to know our employees, cause they are amazing and they, they're what makes Murray City power and what makes Murray City a awesome place, so. Do you have anything, Matt?
We want to have one of our small hydro and all, I don't think we put that on the...
Yeah, let's, um, so we are working on one, so we ran one last year, uh, one was, one we just could not get the board, uh, that's gonna get rewired, so we are shooting to have, or...
Is this one?
We're looking, yeah. We're looking to have both of those up and running, I mean, well, I guess we'll see what kind of snow we get, I'm, I'm kind of, I know, crazy, we don't have a lot of snow yet, so compared to last year, it's been an amazing runoff last year, so hopefully we'll get some snow and we'll be able to, but we had, we had the turbine, or the hydro was running through into... Into October, which was awesome, so, but we will, but, so, we're gonna run, we're gonna get those up and running, the ten stock we had lined, line was coming out, so they came and did something, they went in and, uh, kind of ground out what was flaking off, so we're gonna just run more, one more year at that and then a year, well, so... That'll be through October, as soon as the hydro shuts down, we're gonna have someone in place and probably have them come up and just redo the whole inside lining, so that's gonna be a process, but we figured, after they look into that, he, he thinks that's probably about, you know, we were gonna get that thing to last.
Somebody who does lining.
Yeah, yeah, we need a chat, so, but...
How many megawatts will that give us if both are running?
Five, five megawatts, so.
For both of them?
Yeah, two and a half each, so, and that's a nice resource, so we love that, we love our hydro, yeah, so, that's what got us going. I think someone talked about that right there, yeah, that's what got us back in the day, so that's, we can think whoever had the foresight to buy the hydro and get it going. Yeah, exactly. Was in two thousand?
That's somewhere I would love to get a seat.
That was good, see? There we go. The outdoor center. Okay, you have any questions for us?
Yeah.
Excellent.
Reach out, we're, we, if you ever have any questions, please reach out. That's right.
Where are we at with the lunch bill? Cause I know where you, the contracts, you know.
Yeah, so, um, we had a good, interesting, um, so the trucking owner, the director there that took over, he said, hey, let's, let's work something out. Um, you know, we were taking, they're taking seventy percent of that hydro, or seventy percent of our landfill and we wanted to get that back and, but he said, let's, let's, let's have a contract where we have it available, where if you have, you want to sell low load hours, or you want to be able to sell your recs, which... When in our mind, we would love to be able to sell the recs to them, cause right now, um...
They're not working.
Can you say what recs are?
Renewable, renewable energy credits, so for every megawatt of energy that's generated, we, it comes with a renewable energy credit. But then is, right now they're not worth, they're not worth a lot to us, but in California where they have renewable energy requirements... But then is, right now, they're not worth, they're not worth a lot to us, but in California, where they have renewable energy requirements, they're worth a lot more to them.
So, so we will keep that avenue open, G L's working with us to keep, to write a new contract that, uh, works with them. And so I think we'll keep the avenue open, but we'll bring most, we'll, we'll probably bring it all back to us, but we wanna look at low load hours or something.
Low load, okay, low load.
So, well, it, it benefits them, because they have an R F P that they have, or they have, uh, R F P, it's, uh. And they have a resource, they have a resource mix, or a resource plan that they have to attain, and so they have, they. They really need that green energy, um, so we'll, and we don't keep the wrecks right now, so I think we'll keep them open on track with them. It's gonna be beneficial for both of us.
Is it, are there peak hours more in the evening, or is it like kind of opposite from us?
No, I think, they're probably, they probably peak about like we do. Because they're, they're.
I mean, not that they would need that resource.
Yeah.
Hours.
But I think they're just looking to get, they're just looking, they really, they need it. They were, they were kind of sad that we were asking for it back, but they were okay with that, because we, they knew that we were, we're gonna use it for ourselves.
Yeah.
Because it makes sense to bring it back, it really does, to keep it open for the wrecks, and I think it's awesome.
Yeah.
So, and, yeah, so yes, thank you for asking.
Yeah, I'm glad to hear, because I know it's been a concern of mine.
On its way back, getting it wrapped up, so that should.
Awesome.
We should have something in place.
Okay.
We appreciate all of your support and welcome, great to have two new council members.
Thank you, Greg, thank you, Matt, thank you guys for being here.
Yes, so nice to meet you.
Right, we asked Zach Smallwood to come on up, and as he's coming up and setting up. We'll be discussing, we'll have a discussion on the ordinance of municipal city, municipal code regarding subdivisions.
And before, before Zach starts, I just wanna take a second and let you know that he was selected today as the planning vision manager.
Uh, very exciting, congratulations, I'm really excited to keep going and plug us all into. Wait, not plug us all, the plan, lots of fun things, so, was this pop up? So, okay, so, um, I am gonna just do a little bit of a backup, we are here to talk about the subdivision text amendment. Um, but before I get into that, um, for the two new people, the text amendment, um, is a change in the ordinance. Uh, so these are legislative items, especially when it comes to, um, land use issues, which is typically. Why I'm in front of you, it's usually land use related, um, and they're legislative, and, which means that the planning commission does a first review. Um, checks the code, and then they make a recommendation to you as the city council, um, either to approve or deny or change. Something, um, and then the city council makes the final decision on those types of, um, issues. So, just wanted to give a quick overview of kind of what those are, uh, just so you have a little bit better understanding. So, going on, uh, many cities, uh, throughout the laws out front, Utah in general, uh, had, um. A process for creating subdivisions, so you know, just when you take a piece of property and you split it into another piece of property or. Southwest Valley, hundreds of pieces of property, um, and a lot of those would require up to four public hearings. One for preliminary and final at the, um, planning commission stage, and then one for, um, preliminary and final at the city council stage. Um, we, as Murray, have not done this, um, the city council delegated all the land use authority down to the planning commission. Um, which has actually been really great for Murray, and it kind of streamlines the process a little bit more. So, um, the state was concerned with the broader issue that it was taking, you know, they're, they're very concerned with the amount of housing is the getting built. And the speed with which it is or is not getting built, so, um, they came up with this, uh, Senate Bill one seventy four. Uh, which is what, why I'm in front of you, is, um, all of this is to comply with Senate Bill one seventy four. So, this requires the subdivisions be reviewed by an administrative land use authority, that's again the, the, uh, planning commission. And, um, they specifically called out that city and town councils may not review planning, or may not review subdivisions. Um, and then also mandate certain shot clocks, so once we receive an application and determine it's a complete application. We have to turn that around and have it done within fifteen business days, um, it has to be reviewed by the planning commission, so, um. We've had to kind of change how we accept applications, uh, how I can explain this to the planning commission is that. This will speed up a lot of cities, this will actually slow down Murray a little bit, um, but I kind of mentioned it, that it kind of equalizes everybody out. Um, it's unfortunate that we have to, I have to be a lot more stringent, um, and I promised Pam. Um, so, as part of that, we have to be very clear on applications that we take. Um, so we have to be very clear on what we ask for at the application stage, so I've copied, uh, pretty much Lee High. So, it's not completely finished yet, so I just gave them his application, there are forty nine. Items that you have to go through and check or initial to kind of indicate that you've acknowledged it or N A. If the planning division is saying you don't need it. So, that's kind of where we're at, is, is, we can only ask for those certain things upfront. And we have, we have kind of a shortened timeframe to review. Um, so here is kind of our current process, so right now, we require a concept review, which is kind of an internal review. It gets farmed out by power, uh, the rest of utilities, uh, engineering, things like that. They usually give us comments, and then we can send that back to the applicant, and say, before you submit for preliminary, they have a full list of. Things that you need to address for your subdivision, um, and then, you know, developer amends the plan based on the comments. And then they submit for, I realize that is not actually working. Okay, so then we, um, then they'll submit for a preliminary subdivision, which we are required to. Send out public notices, so that's usually, depending on the size of the project, it can be anywhere from three hundred to five hundred feet. Uh, radius from the property, um, we send mailings to everybody letting them know. So, then again, it gets reviewed by the city departments, staff report, public hearing, and then the planning commission makes that, or their action. Then in between that, they have the final subdivision, so, um, works with engineering to kind of clean up property lines, survey boundaries, utilities, things like that. Then they come in and apply for a sub, final subdivision, and then we pretty much do the exact same thing all over again, just no notice on that one. We didn't, we don't send public notices on that, it just gets scheduled, and usually it's cleanup items, very small things.
So Zach, this is the application that, um, people will have to fill out for Murray.
For Murray, yeah, so I'm, I'm making it look like Murray's applications, but like that's the, pretty much, I'm taking word for word that list of. Of requirements of what they need to submit. So, it, it will look and feel like Murray's, but this is just an example, because I don't have it ready yet for, exactly.
Okay, and you have to have this done in a couple of weeks.
Yeah, which is almost done, so, that's perfect.
And, and you went to power and lease and fire.
Yep, I did distribute the same application.
And they came back with you with a couple of different things or added.
Exactly, yeah, yeah, I, I sent this to all the, um, reviewing departments, said, is anything on here look excessive? Is anything, you need anything added, um, engineering only tweaked two things. So, um, it's a very, very helpful list, um, and I think it's, it's what the state recommended. Well, let me rephrase that, the league, um, the, the league of cities and towns, um, recommended Lee High's application, so I just.
Zach have a question?
Sure.
And maybe, I'm filled with this one, um, I know the school district is not involved with this anything at all, but it does affect schooling eventually. Does, do we have a courtesy notice to them, does, does somebody from the council, are they assigned to ask the school district how this. Affect their schools as we design new subdivisions, or?
So, um, kind of two, two answers to that.
Yes.
Um, the first one is that we do send them a notice, um, if you look on the back of your pocket, you actually see the notice list. When we, um, this is the same type of notice we send out to the.
Don't know that they got the list.
Oh, the mailing list, okay, just kidding, nevermind. Yeah, there's about twenty nine, um.
We're posting it, that's all.
Twenty nine is, I think, what we call effective amenities, so it's usually Conwood Improvement, Dominion Energy, the school districts. So they do know that a subdivision is coming.
Good.
Um, however, the, um, state actually a few years ago, said that cities cannot require. Um, approval from the school districts, um, or, yeah, or for things like that, because of those. Cities were refusing it, but at, at, at the same time, it's not.
They can request input though, right?
They, they can, the developer can go to them and ask for input, um, but the city cannot say. You must go to the, the, the school district and get approval.
But can we recommend they do that?
Not really, because by the time it gets to the point that it's at, at an approval period, that's. That it's really outside, they've already been noticed, um, and, yeah, there's not usually anything.
It's basically just, I mean, this was something when I was on L P C that they were fighting, and they just really wanted more control to streamline. Without surprise that is.
Yeah, that's why I'm teasing them, because they, they recommend, they required, yeah, they required.
They were, they were.
So, so if something will negatively affect the school, for example, a developer is never gonna bring it up.
Won't bring it up, and the, the school can come to.
They don't have to.
They don't, they don't have to, but the school can come, just like any other public hearing, and bring it up.
Yeah, you know, because I'm thinking Horizon Elementary where I'm at, and the, the huge development is gonna be going up there, and we're already overcrowded, the school.
Yeah.
And.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's why a lot of the times we have these, um, the coordination meetings with the school district. Um, we usually have those discussions, Phil usually goes to those and says, this is what's coming down the pipeline, and, and that lets them.
What's our next one?
That's jam day.
So it perhaps that. This is the current process as, as it's written, um, this is the new process, so, sub review is, uh, we're not allowed to ask for it. Um, and we can encourage it, which I do a lot, I, I tell people the benefits of it, and it works far. I've kind of started taking this approach for the past couple of months, um, outside of it, and it's worked really well, people have seen a big uptick in concept reviews. So, um, now the, so the new process will be the preliminary subdivision, again, that really won't change. It's just, you know, same notice requirements, review by city departments, staff reports, public hearings, action by the planning commission. Um, then they will go to, um, reviewing, but with, uh, the city engineer. And any of the departments, uh, one of the, the sticking points that's gonna be a little bit of, of a, not a challenge, but it's just gonna be. A learning process, is that, uh, the city and the developer are allowed a total of four reviews. So, um, it's just gonna put kind of a heavier burden on, on, on the departments to make sure they're checking everything at each review. Um, there are some safeguards in that, in that, um, when we, when we put in. Something in rough writing with a COMEX, the developer has to respond to it, or it's not considered review. If they don't respond to it, so, um, that does help us a little bit, you know, too long time to get.
Is this gonna require more staff?
Uh, I don't think so, but that will be something I think we, we look at as time.
As you go on, yeah.
Yeah, um, I don't think it will, big subdivisions coming, they're gonna be really small, small things, so. Mission grants, uh, preliminary approval, it's good for one year, um, before they have to, um. Come back for final, as a matter of fact, I have one Thursday, it's an extension of it, in the mayor. Um, so, yeah, they have a year, and then a, a year after their final approval, they have to, to record, so. Um, so here's where kind of the changes happen, so the final subdivision. Will be an application, but it will not go to the planning commission, it will go to planning divisions step. Um, again, this is a way to slim down those, that those approval forms, um, and. Just going through, a lot of times, like I mentioned, it's a lot of cleanup, just making sure they're hitting every condition that they need it to be. Which they should be doing anyway.
It is required by the state that.
This is required by the state.
Senate Bill one seventy four.
Yeah, yeah.
That was the one for nonprofits, but.
Yeah, it was the biggest one of last year, to be honest.
And the year before, that's when they introduced it, it was huge.
It has been interesting.
It was like a hundred page.
At least.
Yeah, it was, it was lengthy.
Yeah.
I read it, it was.
Yeah, it's crazy, but, all right, so, um, the findings here, we've, we've gone through. Uh, I've worked really hard with G L and, and Mark, um, we've gone through the code up and down, backwards, forwards. Uh, make sure it's all basically, so.
Okay, so this is the code, yeah?
That is the proposed code, yes, before we get to that though, real quick, I just wanna mention, the planning commission voted.
Yeah.
Five to two to make a recommendation for approval, they did make a recommendation to amend the staff's change. To allow them to review the final subdivision, which unfortunately, we are not able to do, it's the, um.
Cause it's the.
Yeah, it's the state, yeah, unfortunately, the, the planning commission is really unhappy that they were having a review taken away from them.
And all that is in.
And, and that's in.
November sixteenth.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, it was quite.
Yeah, there's, there's, those are, those are some chunky minutes, um, and so, unfortunately, there's not, you know. I, I met with G L and we talked about it, and we just know where.
Unless we get sued.
Unless we get sued.
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, it would have to be approval from the council, too, and that can open us up for the lawsuit, yeah.
Yep, so based on that, we're recommending that, uh, you adopt the recommended changes based on the, uh.
Because the only change is, is that the planning commissioners are not seeing the final.
The final.
That's it, I mean, everything else they're gonna see, you also have your, if they follow this, if the developers followed this, and every. Department head follows this.
Yeah.
And our hands are tied.
Yeah.
With that bill, so we can't, there's nothing that we can do as city council members, because we have to follow Senate Bill one seventy four.
Yes.
And you've already taken care of that with this.
Yeah.
And with G L and, you know, and everybody else and. Yeah.
Yeah, and, and I'll say that I actually think it's gonna end up with quality applications before the planning commission.
Yeah.
Um, we kind of mentioned that we took things really quickly, like this is gonna slow us down. Where we would take an application, and it may not be fully baked, but we have this policy that if you submitted an application by a certain date. You were guaranteed to be on a planning mission by a certain date, and we've since changed that because of these rules, that you just submit an application. We'll review it, make sure it's complete, and then once we get complete, then you'll be on a planning commission. Um, we can already see this in some other land use applications that we've taken, we've been able to sit down, um, Susan and I have been able to sit down. And review an application, go, okay, it's missing this, it's missing this, it's missing this, and then we can go back to them and say, you're not ready. Submit these things, and then we'll put you on a planning mission.
Like a grocery list.
Exactly.
Got it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Questions?
The policy. The policy.
Yes, let's get into it.
Alright, my concern is with the format, uh, the consistency, the lack of consistency with the format of the policy. And we can go over that at another time because it's, you know, kind of semantics, but the, there's several things that are not consistent in terms of the way it was. That you do not choose because, you know what I'm talking about, like.
Sure.
Presented.
Okay, this is like um, there's the A's are not cap, A B C.
Okay.
There, the capitalization is inconsistent. You know, the way the indention is inconsistent and with policy, it's really important to be consistent. So, you know, I can show you specifically, but if we wanna get into it right now, we.
We can, we can read afterwards and then um, but then also I I will um, let you know as well that this will go through um, the codifiers, American Legal Publishing. So once you adopt it, it goes through a codification process.
Okay, so then.
They go through.
Do the changes?
And they, yeah, they do the format.
They'll do the, okay, G L, you're okay with that? That the codifiers will take care of the inconsistencies of the.
We'll make sure it's consistent, yeah, they will.
For sure.
Okay.
We we will make sure.
Okay, great. That just drives me crazy.
Whoa. Yeah, there's a lot, but it's very messy.
And um, where it says on land use authority, which is misspelled, uh, does not include city, the city council or a member of the city council. Well, it says when it defines like land use authority, so it seems that that's superfluous and not necessary, doesn't need to be there. Another thing that drives me crazy in policy is when there's redundancy and it's.
So.
They're critiquing, they're critiquing G L here.
State is the one who gave us all.
To do that?
So if you, if you don't do it consistently, the state says, and you may have to go back in and and re revisit land use authority as a definition. But you don't just throw that out because it doesn't work for them. You just can't do that.
Okay, that you did throw out A T A. I have to get something, come on.
The order should be a lot more upset about that than this. So, let's go back real quick, I wanna touch on three things.
What page?
My page.
Oh.
It's important to understand, it's really important to understand, this is the state who has essentially rewritten our code, right? One of the things they said is that this only applies to single family, two family or townhomes. But Zach felt like it might as well apply across the board to any subdivision because the process should be the same. If you have more than one process, you're gonna probably bump something at some point. Um, the designated single administrative land use authority for preliminary applications is set in stone. It it is, I say it's set in stone. They, when Zach showed you that in the, that that city council had approved certain things, what you're really referring on this slide right here, we haven't done that ever because it's an administrative process, right? In cities that don't have a strong mayor, their city council retains some administrative authority. You don't. So that would never be an issue for us, as, but we're like one of five or six cities in the state that have a strong mayor. So the way the code is written is already a little bit confusing when you start talking about governing bodies and everything else, so just keep that in mind. Um, there is specific about the city council cannot be one of those authorities because it's administrative. The concern there, if you can imagine this, you can imagine that getting in front of the city council with a room full of people who are upset, you're gonna have political decisions as opposed to administrative decisions, and I think that's the concern there. Um, it is also very clear that the planning commission cannot be, um, cannot rule on the final subdivision application. The other thing to keep in mind also, particularly for those of you that are new, most of the heavy lifting, I think, is done at the preliminary stage. And that's when you want the public to come in and give their comments. When that's done, the only question after that at the final is, has the final changed substantially from the preliminary? So if it hasn't, it should be approved. So that's an easy call to make for staff to say, this is what they presented, this is how it has been changed and so we're just gonna approve it. I think that's why that fits. Um, and then I think it's, lastly, they say that you can do this concurrently. We've already been doing these preliminary and finals sometimes concurrently. So it'd be a a meeting at the planning commission and shortly, real shortly after that, I'll go with that. So, back to your misspellings that Zach missed. We'll, let me, we can look at that and I I hope we can even this week anyway, we can talk about that a little further.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. It's, I will tell you this too, there are certain conventions in legal publishing. So no matter what we put, the publisher will put it differently.
There are some consistencies that need to be.
Sure, sure. But the capitalizing of of city, for example, I I haven't looked recent, but in the last, the last publisher we had just ignored that and put a little C every time, so. Be that for our benefit.
Well, there are some others, but I mean.
Sure, sure.
It's just, I just, you know, went over that, just glared at me. I have a hard time with that.
That's alright, we'll, we'll make sure that we take out the word.
That's why I thought if we're, you know, if it's coming before us, then it needs to be.
Sure.
Needs to be. Anyway.
Yeah. Cool.
My question, maybe this is helpful for you, G L, where does this leave us with the future land use map and planning in those stages?
It does, it doesn't really affect the future management.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So when it comes to like changing of zoning, that still falls under us?
Yes, yeah, that's still, that.
Just clarify, yeah.
That goes back to that legislative item.
Uh huh.
Yeah, same.
Okay.
Just part of this bill that that we haven't discussed and and won't get into where it's our doctor and moderating committee. How that is, um, they're stepping up their patency, if we get this done, then we have a report, that we file a report, that we don't, that we penalize two hundred fifty bucks a day, so.
Yeah.
Know that's up there.
Yeah. Yeah. Yep, and we will be, we will be talking about that more soon, so.
Yeah, nice.
Yeah.
Five minutes.
Five minutes.
Sorry, I'm counting.
That's okay, that's alright.
Now, pound's gonna poke me. She won't look at me. You answered all mine through a phone call. It's the conference, conversation that these planning commissioners had. I felt really bad at first and then when I saw the Senate Bill four, I said, we're done. We have a defined choice.
So this means we need to educate the public of the importance of the public hearing during the preliminary portion of it. That's where the process, where we need to hear from them.
Yeah, and I would say, so kind of that, that's another reason why I showed you the process. Um, we never gave, um, like, we never publicly noticed. I mean, we did our agendas and stuff, so if you were following along the agenda, the agenda, then you.
Yeah.
But we didn't send out a notice saying that we were. So really, the public really got informed with the preliminary already. Um, so I I don't think it really affects all that much. We will continue to send notices for preliminary subdivision.
Yeah.
But um, yeah, I I mean, and.
Those are within that range. Three hundred, five hundred.
Three to five hundred.
Yeah, yep.
The side. Yeah, but yeah, thank you. Yeah, no problem.
Senate Bill one seventy four. Thank you.
Thank you, thanks Zach.
Congratulations.
Oh, I know.
Well, great.
You can't take your.
We will go ahead and move on to the reports from inter local boards and committees. Um, and everyone will get about five minutes each. We'll start with Ben Ford for the Central Valley Water. Come on up, Ben. Good, how are you? And Brenda, your hoster.
So just a quick update on Central Valley. So for the new council members, so we are one of the member entities that own a year of Central Valley. So Central Valley is the largest treatment plant in the state, largest in the valley. Average flow is about fifty M G D million gallons per day is what they're treating. Our average flow Murray City going to theirs is about three and a half. Then you get home the day they treat. So a few things, what's going on there? Um, so they're just starting the budget year, January one. This this budget is about twelve percent less than the prior year's budget and that is due to all the major construction going on. We hit the peak of that and we're starting to come down. A few projects are gonna be wrapped up this year. By twenty, end of uh, twenty, well, end of twenty twenty five when you do projects. Projects will be wrapped up, one project will finish in over twenty twenty six. So spending, spending is down. Um, one, one thing, there was a a new Senate bill that was passed that modified um, how we have to public notice the meetings there, so each entity has to now public notice the meeting, so we'll be posting the board agendas on the board, at least twenty four hours in, and so it wasn't revealed before, that'll be requirement moving forward, so all the meetings will be public noticed. Um, one big thing, so over, over the COVID, uh, with COVID, obviously that drove our price of construction kind of through the roof, um, but that also uh, delayed the construction process as well. And with that, the state, Central Valley turned over five thousand pages of documentation into the state to try and get a extension on the discharge permit. And they received one, which is kind of impressive, so. It's kudos to Central Valley staff and the documentation and kind of the foresight that they saw the writing on the wall and documented all the, all the delays and changes. To our, best of our knowledge, no other even plant or entity received an extension like that. So it's, it's huge to know that we won't uh, incur any fines if we need to violate our permit. So we have an eighteen month extension to July of twenty twenty six. Which is huge. Um, couple other things, so with the natural, the natural gas escalation we saw last year, we did get hedges in place, so we have a natural gas lock-in for essentially close to two years, which is, which is huge, you know, the surges that affected us uh, last year.
It's when they were complaining about the gas prices, I said, don't complain to us. We know.
They won't, they won't do the root ban. Um, one, one other thing of note, so as part of this process, uh, Central Valley took a, a long time to kind of determine the the treatment process that they ultimately decided to go with, the B N R process. Um, but looking kind of down the road, the long term benefits of it, with with this process, um, gonna end up saving about one point seven million in electric costs each year annually by going to this process. That's over the life of the plant, obviously. Um, and it'll probably continue to grow till up. But as part of that, uh, as part of the B N R process, you're gonna get about a two point nine million dollar rebate to the Rocky Mountain power exempt program, which is um, the biggest rebate, will be the biggest rebate that they've ever issued, so. Yeah, it's huge. So there's a lot going on, construction is ongoing, um, and another year or two and we'll leave.
It's started, it's scary.
Crazy, yeah.
Anybody have questions?
Questions?
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright.
Thank you.
Ben. Alright, Brenda is gonna be reporting on Utah infrastructure agents.
Uh, show you some pictures. Not of Utah infrastructure. You guys all know what you're. Just gonna show you just a couple of pictures. This is, um, Utopia U I A is doing very well. Um, you know, they have a very rocky start, but they're, they're doing well. This is just a picture of their recurring revenue. Kind of wanders through from July of fourteen up. You can see it is still rising. Um, even I think COVID in twenty twenty, it's actually rising as fast as during COVID, so.
Chris, could you help me?
Um, I don't know, I pronounce very well.
Okay, U I A and Utopia, they're basically, they're two separate companies. Um, but they basically provide Utopia services. Utopia rents it, U I A is the one who is doing the um, new builds and the charging of it.
With internet.
With your internet. Your contractor agency.
Thank you.
So when you see an ad for Utopia, it's really U, U I A that you're signing up with, but they're using the Utopia networks and Utopia has all the employees and. Example, address those. This is their actual revenue. Um, the blue line at the bottom, that's relatively flat, that's Utopia revenue. They do mostly consulting, they've gotten into, um, and they do have some business entities and there are some entities there. The residential's and the big businesses are the red line and then you combine them. The two combined, so it's on an upward trajectory. Sometimes when they go down, it's probably just credits or adjustments or doesn't take much to do it.
Brenda, did they, was one of the reasons they created U I A for bonding?
Yes.
Okay.
That was one, the reason they created U I A was because Utopia, they hadn't bonded out what they could. So they created U I A. It's, it's past, you just can't do anything. So this is, this one I find interesting, this is their revenue compared to their bond obligations. And the bond obligations are the dotted lines, which means that they haven't quite started paying payments yet. And then um, all the way up and that little one that's got like four little dots right on the end is their latest bond. And then what, who they bonded for, uh, it's based on the colors, yes. Uh, we are not, um, like for Layton's Bond, Morgan's, Payson's, anything with a name. We have no, if they don't pay, it's not our fault, it's not us.
Yeah.
Payson will have to pay. So, but that's just kind of a thing, they've got a really good margin in there. Wish it was more, but um, currently they are up to sixty one thousand subscribers. Um, and the mer, this is the most important thing on here is the Murray take rate. It dropped, it's at thirty percent, which is really good. Um, they they had finished our build out and they have maintained that thirty percent. Um, we'd like it to be a little higher, but thirty percent is what they aim for. Um, some of the, the real stars are Woodland Hills, um, they have no other options, so they're at sixty percent. But they're.
Does it go, I'm not looking at, and this is news to me, are they going into Santa Clara?
They did a consulting more type agreement with them. Santa Clara is funding all of it and U, Utopia is putting it in for them.
They're going into other states.
And and they've done that, Santa Clara, they did that in. Pleasant Grow, some of them, anything that's not one of the original one cities, that's what they did. And I don't like it, I would love them to, both cities to have to pay the original debt, but I like it because that's why their revenue is growing so much and that they're paying us dividends now. So it's, it's good. Um, this is their total addresses, you don't, you just see that they just keep going up, they're getting more and more locations that they're.
Is this why we saw that commercial?
Don't go into why you're seeing that commercial, but you can, you can.
Yeah.
This is Murray's. Um, the one that I like on here is the Murray Residential subscribers. It's climbing. You see that little dip right at the end?
Oh.
That is because a big multi-unit housing complex had a new. That is because a big multi-unit housing complex had a new individuals and they went to one. So the apartment complex took over all of the individuals, so you see a little dip, but it's already getting, it's gonna go back and pass that pretty quick. So, but the revenue ends up being the same for, it's just in their subscriber count.
Yeah.
It's different. And this, these are probably two of the cities, the only reason I have them up here is because of those commercials you're seeing. They are, this is a city that has, it's very small.
Barriers.
There is no way that one of those big companies that provides internet is gonna run their internet into this city, especially this one. It's only got like five hundred units that they could possibly get. There's no way the home customer is gonna go in there. Look at the take rate there, it's like sixty percent, seventy percent. It tells you there is nothing else that they can do and they are, that's why Utopia exists right there. It's because these, these guys in these small little communities can get high-speed internet. Now somebody's probably working at home that couldn't afford it. Yeah.
Brenda, can I ask you to do me a favor? Will you, just thirty seconds, just, and, and maybe you guys already know, Paul and I. Will you just kind of just take a second and say how we got into Utopia, about when?
That's, that was gonna be part of it.
Oh, never mind.
Thank you, Doug.
Don't let Doug do that.
Poor Doug, I am, he's doing my call report. At least you can do that, Doug.
Doug, come on up. He was here when.
I know, I just, I have never really had it explained to me, I know how it happened. I have never had anybody really sit down and explain how many years, how many years are left, how much we're, I know how much we're paying them a year. And what it was.
Oh, you're talking the bonds?
Yeah.
Okay, so. So Utopia stands for Utah Telecommunications Open Infrastructure Agency. Versus UIA, Utah Infrastructure Agency. So some fifteen years ago, and I'd have to look up, I didn't come prepared with that date that Utopia started, but.
It's not a star.
But it was about fifteen years ago, approximately. Murray City voted, or the city council at the time voted to join Utopia. We were one of eleven cities that joined at that time.
Brad, were you on that council?
I was on.
Yeah, it was just before you.
How I won.
Take them gone. Yeah. Yeah, it just probably.
And the concept of Utopia, which is still, still the concept today is, is that they were gonna put the infrastructure fiber cable into the ground in hopes that anybody, company would use it and it would be a cost savings because it didn't, everybody wasn't putting their own fiber into the ground. So Google, AT&T at the time, and many other companies. The idea was is if, if we can get it in the ground in these cities, it'll save all these other people some money and it'll also provide super fast, fiber fast telecommunications to areas that don't have it right now. Because you have to remember back in those days, fiber was relatively new and people were using mostly copper and things like that to do that. So Murray elected to join in. At the time, they provided internet as well as they were trying to provide phone and also cable or TV, wasn't cable TV, but TV they were trying to provide. And they, they rolled out a plan where they had about a hundred and eighty five million dollars that they bonded for and all of the cities were on the hook to have to pay the bond cost. And so they went out, got a hundred and eighty five million dollars and began installing the fiber in these eleven cities. The, the business model at the time didn't work because people were not subscribing at a rate that they thought that they would initially to pay the bond cost. And they had a lot of problems being a new company. They're with TV, they're having trouble with phones, they were even having trouble with their internet at the time. And so a lot of people who initially joined left it because there, it just wasn't a reliable service. And so the cities were left with this, paying these bond payments of a hundred and eighty five million dollars. Back in the time, I think Murray City was paying about a million and a half dollars when it first started. And of course, there was no revenue to come with it. And that, there was kind of a, an unagreed promise at the time when the councils and everybody was, when Utopia was selling this to the cities is that this would pay for itself and it would be a long-term source of revenue to the city, much like power is to us now, right? And, and that just didn't materialize. And so, so that was kind of the early days, the early downfalls. It was a thirty-year bond, so Murray City was on the hook to pay these bond payments for thirty years. And we're about a little over halfway through making these bond payments. So there's still a long time left to make these payments. Things got so bad at one point in time that they couldn't even operate Utopia. And so they came to the eleven cities and they said, in addition to bond payments, will you pay our operation expenses? And Murray City was one of a few that refused to do that. Our city council said, oh.
We were on when we refused.
We're not gonna give you any more money. And that obviously didn't bode well with the other cities.
They hated this.
At the time, well, about, about that time, when things got to its worst, the Utopia said, we've got to change our business model and we've got to create an alter ego, if you will, UIA. And it's gonna allow us to go out and get additional money because Utopia, I mean, their, their bonds got downgraded to almost junk bonds. And, and they made some poor decisions at the same time by buying into what was called a swamp in the financial market, which required the interest rate to increase every year. So every year, instead of paying one point five, the next year Murray would be paying one point five, five, one point six, and it kept going up until what we're paying today. They refinanced them last year or two years ago to a fixed rate, but now we're paying close to two million dollars a year. For Utopia. But in the meantime, they created UIA to go out and get more money, to do more build. Because things were starting to improve, they were starting to see subscribership go up and they wanted to expand their network beyond what it currently was. Because even in the early days, even though Murray was supposed to have full build out, we didn't get full build out. Like we didn't get, Murray didn't get full build out until last year, two years ago, yeah.
Yeah.
So, so a lot of cities like Layton, West Valley, they were even worse shaped than Murray was, they had really no build out. And, but as time went along, like I say, things improved, they created UIA. UIA now focuses on going not only to the eleven original cities, but they go, they focus on trying to get other cities outside of the eleven original cities to implement fiber. The cities, essentially what they do is they commit to pay Utopia to install the fiber, run their system, but their residences are on the hook for the cost of it, the bonds. And that's kind of what Brenda was talking about earlier. It becomes a win-win because the more cities that sign up and make money helps the original cities like Murray. Because what happens is, is now the revenues Brenda has shown on these charts is increasing dramatically. And UIA pays a portion of their revenues to Utopia to help pay the bond, the original bonds. And so, and this has only happened in the last two years. So currently, even though we're paying two million dollars on our bonds, UIA and Utopia is refunding to the, I think this year was a little over five hundred thousand dollars. And the, and the idea is, is that over time, we don't know how long it'll be, eventually there will be a revenue stream that will hopefully offset the total bond payment that the city has to make. And after those bonds are paid off in fifteen years, ten to fifteen years, that's a revenue stream that will come to the city every year without any bond obligation. So I don't know, Mayor, I don't know if that was.
Also, I just want to add a little, correct me if I'm wrong, Doug, but the new cities, all beyond the eleven cities, I don't believe any of them had to bond, correct?
Well, they are on the hook if they don't get enough subscribers to pay the bond payments.
Well, I kind of want to be one of those cities.
Yeah, in hindsight, I think everybody, including probably our original council that voted on this, would have said, let's just wait.
Yeah.
And we could have joined now and not have to pay two million dollars a year.
I have a question about Utopia. I know that they're branching out of state now.
Well, they have been out of state for a while, so they're in Idaho Falls.
So we, so we only get the benefits back from the state of Utah?
No, we get the benefit from the.
For the whole entity?
Yeah, whole Idaho Falls, Bozeman, our two cities to get quite a bit of revenue from. I'm not, we're not in Arizona, I believe, but there's talk about going into California and they're researching that.
I do know Utopia is in Arizona, in Kingsman, and then there's, they're talking about California and Texas. I only know because I know a provider.
Well, you probably might know something I don't, but.
But I wasn't sure if that covered.
But we get, yeah, so, so all of these deals that Utopia and UIA are doing now are essentially revenue generators for UIA and Utopia.
That's good to know.
Yeah.
That's awesome.
So the only thing that I would add to what Brenda told you that's been new in the last few months is, and you may have heard this on the radio or you may have seen it on TV, is that there is a dark path out there that is, for some reason, has surfaced and running campaign ads to basically say that government-run telecommunications organizations like Utopia should not happen. And they're trying to, I think they're trying to create some political pressure out there at the local level to not want to join Utopia. And I say a dark path because nobody really knows where the money behind this is. But I think we, you could all speculate, you know, that there are bigger telecommunications companies. And they're now, Utopia is kind of, now that it's being successful, has caught their attention. And obviously they're now saying, ah, this is, before it, they were not worried about Utopia. It was not taking customers.
And other federal benefits that are happening in other states.
So, so the, the staff at Utopia has met with, well, Greg Hughes is kind of the spokesperson in Utah for this. They've met with him.
No.
No.
No. For the dark.
So he's the spokesperson?
Yeah, he was in the video.
And they have met with him, they're, they're trying to understand, is this a real threat? Or, you know, how this is gonna impact Utopia. Right now, there's not a lot of concern because, because there's nothing really that's coming of it, right? But if, if something does come of it, I guess I'll, I'll report that in a future meeting. But just be aware that there is some effort going on out there to try and discourage people from joining Utopia.
The one video, correct?
So, yeah, it's just, it's one TV ad and one radio ad.
Thirteen or fourteen years to live.
Yes, yeah. There's not much, much that could happen unless the state legislature weighs in on it, right? And says, says, we're not going to allow any more cities to join Utopia. And I don't know, I wouldn't put it yet on our state legislature.
All right, thank you.
I'll just move along then to remember which order they were on.
So Valley Emergency Communications Center, Metro Fire and Utah Communications Open Infrastructure Agency.
So Valley Emergency Communications Center, its acronym is BECC, B-E-C-C, or it's, their official name is Salt Lake Valley Emergency Communications Center. Is essentially our nine-one-one system. And so what happens is, is there's a portion of everybody's telephone bill that helps to go fund, to, to fund the nine-one-one system. In Salt Lake County, there are two dispatch centers. There's, there's the Salt Lake Dispatch Center, which includes Salt Lake City and Sandy. And then there's BECC, which includes everybody else in Salt Lake County. And that's, that's what Murray City is a member of, is BECC. The, so when somebody calls BECC, they get the dispatch center and what, what BECC does is they try to immediately separate an emergency from a non-emergency. Now, you all probably have access to an, a non-emergency number. If not, Jennifer can give you that, give you that non-emergency. That's, so yeah, so if it's a, if it's a dog barking, if it's a, I don't, I don't know. Craig could, our chief can talk about all sorts of non-emergencies that they get called to that would be better to go through the non-emergency number. But the, the emergency numbers are obviously the ones that BECC focuses on responding, answering quickly and responding quickly. And for you, you previous council members that have been on the council for a few years or more know that that has been a problem for BECC in, in the, because it's the largest nine-one-one center, call center in Utah. And they take so many calls, it takes a lot longer to, to answer some of those calls. And they've been working on trying to improve that. Right now, they're meeting all of the benchmarks that are established by the state legislature with the exception of one, which is their transfer rate. And then, and the reason that they can't meet that right now is because when there's an accident on the freeway, those, they come to, they come to BECC or any call center and then they have to go to the Utah Highway Patrol. And that, that is called a transfer. So that slows the process down rather than going directly to the Utah Highway Patrol. And that's what BECC is working on right now. That's one of the things that is their top priority is to eliminate the call from going to BECC, UHP and have it go directly to UHP. And as soon as they get that resolved, which is, should just be within a matter of a few months, that will improve the transfer rates and then really BECC will be operating optimally or at least meeting the benchmarks established by the state legislature. The other major thing that is going on at BECC right now is they're without an executive director. They have been for about four months, their previous executive director retired. So the board is doing a executive search nationwide. They've hired a firm that specializes in executive searches. And so we have been waiting for them to provide us with candidates to interview and select for a new executive director.
It can't be you.
What's happening?
It can't be you.
Can you work?
No, it won't be me.
He can do both.
All right, so let me now just shift, unless there's any questions on that. I'll shift to what's called the Metro Fire Agency. So the Metro Fire Agency was established, I don't know, fifteen years ago, twenty years ago. At the same, or shortly after the United, UFA, United Fire Agency was established. So UFA is a, essentially a county fire agency, meaning Salt Lake County, not, not area, but organization, Salt Lake County. And so those cities that. Um, and so those cities that contract their services to Salt Lake County are serviced by U F A. They're also, by the way, serviced by U P D, which is United Police Department, right, so. Cities like Mill Creek, Holiday, a lot of the townships. Which they don't have their own police and fire departments, are serviced by this, these U F A and U P D organizations. And U F A, the fire, fire agency is, at, at one time was one of the large, was, was the largest. Fire agency in Salt Lake County. Um, and cities like Murray, um. Raper, West Valley City, we all have our own fire departments and so. Uh, but some of these cities are too small to offer a full service of ser- uh, of services, for example. Uh, fire departments don't just, as you know, don't just respond to fire and medical emergencies, they respond to things like. Uh, drownings that are going on in the Jordan River and. They respond to hazmat spills that happen on the freeway or other places and. And so, in order to, um, pro- become full service. The cities that were not part of U F A decided to join together and specialize, each city then was. Could become a specialist in something that all of these cities could benefit from and so that's essentially. What Metro Fire Agency is, the other thing they can do is they can share in purchasing. Um, practices that can save the city money because you've got more, more people, more cities, more citizens that are. Involved in the purchasing, so they share, so they essentially share services. Uh, and share, um, purchasing and, and that's what we do and we meet quarterly. Um, it's been, we don't often meet, we've even canceled meetings, the last time we met was six months ago, so I don't really have a big update to give you. There's been some purchases that have, that have been made and we, we share a dog, uh, uh. Fire sniffing dog. That is, I think, I think. Sandy is the specialist for the dogs, they, they have the dog and we, we help buy food for the dog and. Those kinds of things, right, so that's an example of what Metro Fire.
Just, it, just curious Doug, just a general question, have, have we seen our fire costs increase or decrease as? Part of us being, of this part of this metro?
I think, Joey, Joey's better at this, but.
Ballpark.
Chief, I would say they probably decrease because we are benefiting from a larger.
That's what I would expect here, yeah.
That fair?
Yeah, it would be tough because it's been around long enough, the overall cost, yes, has increased, but if you were to separate it out and not be a part of Metro Fire, you. See an increase, so it has decreased our overall operations.
Yeah, that's what I'd expect, thank you.
Alright, and then, why don't we just go, keep going into.
Going to cog.
Again, mayors.
Yeah.
So I attend cog.
In three minutes?
Yeah, I attend cog with the mayor and, uh, cog meets, uh, four times a year. And cog is essentially, it stands for Council of Governments, it's all of the mayors in Salt Lake County. Including the county mayors and the township mayors and. Um, they come together and talk about various county-wide issues. At the last meeting, which Diane was present at, once a year they invite the council members of the cities to. Attend kind of a legislative meeting and that happened last month in December. So the, uh, really, um, they had, uh, representative Galen Benyon, who is. Happens to represent a portion of Murray, uh, she talked about some of her interests on working on. Repairing corridors, uh, specifically along the Jordan River, how she wants to get some funds to help cities. Improve those, as well as she wants to sponsor some legislation that deals with short-term rentals. And she's sounded like, to me, she was in favor of short-term rentals.
I wasn't a hundred percent sure when she was through, but I think she's in favor.
Yeah, I think she's in favor of short-term rentals and so she's gonna introduce some legislation, I think, to, uh. Maybe even require cities to have to allow them.
Requirement and she, and setting some tiers of them.
And she had some pretty tough stringent, uh, things that you had to follow through.
Yeah, I think she wants to codify it, yeah, better than, than what it is.
Right now, every city does their own thing.
Yeah.
And Murray doesn't do short-term rentals. We don't allow them when we know they exist, right? And then Senator Fillmore, um, talked about mostly housing and. Um, low-income housing issues and I think you're gonna hear this, we have our legislative breakfast next week. Hope you all saw, got your invitation, official invitation today, but we're gonna hear this a lot over the next. Two months, three months and that is, is the, um, the state is gonna require cities, I believe. To have a policy and ordinance for first-time homebuyers, that's the real focus this year is gonna be. How can, how can you as a city help people get into homes for the first time?
And that's new, new.
Correct?
That would be, uh, new, I don't mean new, I meant to say, all, new homes, I wish they were doing a. Do some homes, but I hear there's some developers on the.
Just a few.
And then, um, and then just to make you aware that Mayor Hells has, um, consented to be the. Leadership for cogs, uh, it'll come out for a vote.
I was, I was, what's the railroad? Railroad. Yeah.
This, could it also be for people buying older homes? There has to be a brand, brand and numerous.
When the legislature comes out, but right now, the governor, Governor Cog.
Because I got a letter from him and it stated some things, highlighted what he would like. Everyone is older and going in and refurbishing it, new heating, electricity, whatever, they wanna do windows, roofing.
We'll see, but what we've heard at all of our meetings so far is it was only for new, new, new homes.
I think the bill itself is for new homes, but.
They're trying, what they're trying to do is they're trying to increase the housing supply, not, that's. The big problem is, you know, there's what, fifteen thousand? Short fifteen thousand homes or, or residential homes and what they're trying to do is. We'll see how that destination works. And you'll be the first.
Well, I don't know that.
Alright, any other question?
No.
Thanks Doug.
Thank you. Yeah, we are.
Wolford?
I'm sorry, Mayor.
Come on, let's stand first, Wolford. So, just real quick, first of all, I realize attending these meetings, that no one really knows. Everything about what you're doing inside.
Garbage.
Yeah, garbage, seriously, they, they are doing a lot of campaigning to, uh, for their website and sending out information. So that we can be educated, it seems like it's something that has to be educated every, every year. Sorry, we should do that, um, just for your information, they've got curbside Christmas tree collection that they're doing right now.
This is for the east side of Murray. Everybody have those.
I know she took it down the next day after, so anyway. I know, yeah, um, and then, uh, there was one more thing. Oh, and we had a budget opening, really honestly, this, this stuff, just letting you know, we had to have a meeting.
Right.
Are you gonna be the leader of that?
No, not leader, no, 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 I'm just on the board. I got railroad in the other one. Anyway, so that's how it's going.
Alright. Now we're adjourned, thank you Mayor.